Welcome everyone to the Plunkton School Committee meeting for Monday, April 24th. We are going to first, should we do the hearing first before we even schedule?
Yes, it's posted, yes please.
Okay, so we're gonna start off with our school choice public hearing, which has been posted as appropriate in the papers and so on and so forth. Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to close the public hearing for school choice and we can talk about it later during the superintendent's report.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, moving right along. And we will come back to school choice later on, have the committee's discussion. So first to acknowledge and schedule visitors, we have David Ziole here, just gonna talk about the school lunch program and we might as well jump right into that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Don't wanna make you wait around for it.
Okay, I made a recommendation to the superintendent that we raise the price of school lunch, you pay the school lunch by 25 cents. We had a tool that we have to fill out every year and it's called a paid lunch equity tool and what you do, it's a calculator on the USDA portal and what you do is you take the numbers of paid lunches from October 2016 and replace that number in a column and it'll automatically generate to tell you what you are required to pay, charge for paid school lunch. And in the Silver Lake district, we need to up the price of my recommendation with 25 cents.
Okay. So unfortunately our hands are tied by the federal algorithm that's set up and by default, we're subsidizing children who can, by the definition, afford to buy their own lunches with the free and reduced lunch program. So that's in fact why we need to increase the cost by a quarter per lunch for our students here at Denne. I'm no proponent of increasing the school lunches unless there's good cause and this is not our choice at all, not from administration, not from school committee, but it would affect the program and how we can serve all of our students here at Denne. So I will make a motion after further discussion to increase by 25 cents for next year's school lunches.
The only thing I, if I may add, is we just voted to increase the cost in Kingston to $2.75 by a quarter, that was two weeks ago, and in Silver Lake, we also increased it by a quarter to $3. Halifax is already at $2.75.
Okay.
So we would be right within, we did a, they did a survey of some surrounding districts and most of them are going to the $2.75 or $3.
Okay, and do we, we up, we did this at least at some point in the last three years, didn't we have to increase?
Yes, yes, and we're just about breaking even, you know, we're, we're not, we're doing okay, but if you remember, we did, you know, make some decisions about a different kind of tray which cost a little bit more money. We believe we're gonna end the year okay, but it's gonna be very close, so.
When I was here for the honors breakfast, I did get feedback of how wonderful those trays actually are.
Good, there you go.
Which, which is great to hear and from everyone using them is that they're actually improvement over the Styrofoam for so many other reasons.
Excellent.
In just functionality, so that, that's good too. Yeah, I don't, I don't really have any, I mean, we have to do this in order to be able to come up to where we need to and sounds like even a little bit just to make sure we are breaking even on this, which is, we kinda need to pay for what we're doing, so.
This will be put in the handbook as an increase and we'll make sure Mr. Veneto gets a letter out to families to let them know over the summer that the price will be increasing. And this will be effective next school year, not this school year.
Anything else? Okay.
Make a motion to increase the school lunches at the Denne by 25 cents, starting with the 2017-2018 school day.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Dave.
Okay, so moving on, minutes of March 27th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve minutes from March 27th, 2017.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor? Aye.
How about executive?
And we had executive as well?
You have executive?
Yeah, it's in the packet, we'll take a moment just look it over.
I make a motion to accept and to hold the executive session minutes from March 27th, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor? Aye. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just thinking that it would be prudent at some point to have a session where we review some of the executive session minutes and we release them.
Okay.
I think we have a few that we could probably let go at this point.
Okay.
Something else for me, perhaps?
Okay.
May or June, depending on, maybe depending on where we finish up with the contract stuff, because then we could clear out a whole bunch.
Yeah, yeah, either May or June, okay.
All right, I did not have any correspondence that I had picked up, nothing else in here?
I do neither.
Okay, on to new business, we had mentioned briefly the Denne driveway sign last time, we're still working on that. I had had some conversations with CASA and I think the sixth grader and CASA need to get together and have a little discussion about that, just to make sure everyone is in agreement about what we want to do or not do, so there probably will be some, more of an update next time.
Okay.
I think as folks know, one of the folks in CASA had a little bit of excitement at their house this past weekend, so other things they're worrying about right at the moment, but we'll, we'll, we'll get back to that in the next week or so and try and make sure we got everyone in the same, in the same way. And then with respect to the sick leave bank, we have both in our teachers' contracts as well as, both in the aides' contracts, sick leave bank, and as part of that, there is the committee that authorizes use of that, of which it is required to be two folks from the school committee. And I know that we are, you know, we, we have elections coming up next month, that said, I think it's still best that we kind of move ahead and we can adjust if we need to, but we probably should get two folks on that in the case that we need to use it. We haven't had to use it in almost three years that I've been doing this, which is, that's great for everybody, but I would hate for us to be just passed a school committee meeting and run into that issue where we are needed and we don't have that, those folks signed. So I was just wondering if anyone was willing to, to do this, I'm certainly happy to do that, if need be. Hopefully it would be something that we'll have there and not need to use. So basically what happens is, is I believe there's, there's two, two teachers who would be part of that, or aides, and then it would be two school committee members and then we would review the request and adjudicate it as appropriate, so.
Yeah, I'll do it now.
Happy to do it?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so maybe take a motion maybe for Stephanie and myself?
Make a motion for Stephanie and John to be our sick bank representative from school committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Stephanie. All right, unfinished business, water treatment update, from, from the warrant perspective, it is on the warrant, I'm not sure what the position is, I haven't, I haven't seen the warrant yet as far as positioning on that, but it will be at town meeting, it's important, remind your friends, we need folks there to help get this through. It will be an expenditure from the capital, well, I'm not sure, if it is an expenditure from the capital purpose fund, then that would require, that would require a two-thirds vote, if it is from free cash or something else, then maybe not. So we'll know that when the warrant comes out, but I think it is important to remind folks, not just because of this, but because of other things that will be on the warrant, to have attendance there, and certainly I know that's hard for families with small kids because it's a school night, but I would certainly encourage folks out there to please come to town meeting, particularly from a school committee perspective and for our school, that we need to get this passed in order to be able to do the water treatment. And it's also one of those items that isn't exactly our, fully our choice, we are required by DEP to get this done, so we have support from finance committee and I understand it from selectmen as well, so we just need voter support to come out to town meeting and help us get this through so we can get this project moved along and get the water done with that.
May I mention something?
Sure.
I spoke with Christine today, she wasn't able to make the meeting this evening, but she mentioned a conversation she had with Dale.
Yep.
That it is on the regular warrant, not on the special warrant.
Yes.
So therefore, work could not begin on it until after July 1, where if it were on the special warrant, it could potentially begin sooner. I don't know if there was any conversations around that, she just wasn't sure about that because we were anxious to try to get going.
Well, work can't begin until July 1st, but we can go out to bid, I believe, before that, so I'll, I'll, I can poke at that too.
Okay.
I mean, again, you know, you can't, you can't spend any money because you have no money for it, so the money doesn't show up till July 1st. Typically the special is limited for, is typically used for items that are expenses already incurred, which is why they don't typically put sort of forward-looking projects onto that.
Sure, okay.
And my guess is, is that if we get approval by the time we're through the RFP process, it would be July 1st or close there to anyways.
Okay.
I think, I think that's how it's worded, I don't think there is a prohibition from going out to bid until after July 1st. You couldn't go out to bid before town meeting actually voted on it.
Right, right.
Where you wouldn't actually have a funded project.
We'd wanna go out sooner if we wanna try to get that done this summer.
But I think that's why we were saying that it would be good to kind of get the RFP, everything in and ready to go.
Okay.
Have town meeting and then be able to push out after that and get into the next, next state register and stuff like that, but I'll, I'll just double check that understanding with Dale.
I just passing that message from Christine.
No, excellent. Okay, so, nothing else on the playground as of yet?
No, we're still gonna stand firm and wait for town meeting to go forth, we wanna focus all of our energies on the water treatment and make sure that that gets through and we can get something in the works.
Great.
Do you want me to remove that from the agenda?
No, I'd love for you to keep it there.
You got it.
Because I believe Peter and I and the committee from what's been said publicly so far realizes that this is a critical need for the Denne.
Okay, great.
But sometimes having too many fires going at once, things can get out of hand.
I don't understand that at all.
Yeah, see, that's what happens with all those meetings you've had the last couple months. Okay, on to reports of standing committees, administrative review?
No meeting.
No meeting. Negotiations, we have had negotiations both with the teachers and with the aides, we will go to executive session at the end to talk about the specifics of that. Union 31? We have enough to.
Yeah, we have enough, we, we met to global joys review and all the goals were met, we had 17 folks submitted the forms out of 24, which was probably the highest number we've probably seen, I mean, this, this, this committee did very well with the submission, so I would just, I would just say to anybody that's, I don't know if other committees listen to our TV, but I don't know if some of the people that didn't do it, maybe they get hung up on it, they have to fill out the whole form, I mean, even if they just put like one or two things on it, you don't have, you don't have to fill the whole thing out, but when they collaborate together, you, you get all the information, so I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there that people can think about it that way, so that next year, we can have the full amount of people, because I think Joy deserves that, so. There was one item that they, everybody agreed on, that we hope that Joy does delegate a little bit more responsibility to her staff to take some things off of her plate, which we think would help her for the following year, so.
I must say a couple things, one, please thank Lisa on my behalf, and I'm sure for all of us, for, for pestering us.
Yeah.
It's, I hate to say it, it's needed.
Yeah.
There's so many things going on, it's important to do that, and I also thought that this form, and maybe I'm thinking back to the one we used a few years ago in comparison, was a lot easier to fill out.
Absolutely.
And a lot, I think, once you kind of figured out the order of it, it flowed pretty easily and without, I mean, it's, you know, you kind of get that issue, if you have a lot of blank space, people tend to go, "Yeah, I'm not doing that."
Yeah, exactly.
And so having that mix and where you're able to leave the comments, but still be able to get some, you know, qualitative information in there, I think was, was good and helped to get it done, so, but.
Yeah, because some of the things, some folks weren't have thoughts on, you know what I mean, so.
Well, I remember we were, I was doing it late or something for John and, I mean, I gotta, I'd like him, "Okay, I've worked with him for two months, what am I supposed to be?"
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know what, he's, he's friendly, you know, I, I, everything seems to be, you know, but I thought, I thought the process of all was quite good and, and it's great to hear that level of, that's, that's actually quite a lot.
Yeah.
Yep.
17 to 24, so, great. Anything else, just, that was, that was the full scope of the meeting, right?
Casey from Halifax, she's leaving, she's not returning for next year.
Yep.
And a nice chair was, was given to her with a cake and stuff like that, the kids at the Silver Lake made, I mean, it was, it was pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Okay. Wonderful.
Yeah, one school committee member mentioned they're gonna go off, so they're gonna get a chair. Go back on, yeah, it's like, mm, oh.
Do it enough, a couple times.
Yeah, yeah, that one, he has, yeah.
He puts in the time the case would put it.
Yeah, yeah, amazing.
Pack?
We have a meeting this Wednesday, we didn't have our last meeting, which would have been my report, we didn't make quorum, but we've had such good attendance this year that it's not an issue for us right now.
Okay, I don't think we've got anything on policy?
No.
Anything else on capital improvement?
Not that I'm aware of, thank you.
Legislative?
The House came out with their own budget at the state level, ironically enough, it was less than Governor Baker's total number for the state budget, it's still going through some negotiations at this point, there was a nominal increase in education funding and some line items that would help us out here, I still encourage people to pay attention to what's happening at the federal level. The Assistant Superintendent and I had a conversation about Title II funding, which a lot of people don't understand what that's used for, but here we use it for professional development funding and the direct professional development, our teachers have gone through this year, has been funded by Title II funds, and these are one of the things that's on the docket to be cut to zero potentially on federal level, so it's, these things that are happening in Washington DC do have an effect on our children here at Denne.
What kind of level of funding is that, I mean, like what would be the impact?
It's like 80, 90,000.
Yeah, this year is a little over 86,000.
Is that for the district or for?
Yeah, for all, yeah, but it's all PD, so, you know, any graduate courses, any thing that we bring in when we have speakers on the professional development days, opening days, it pays for mentors, it pays for any curriculum work we do, it is a, it would be a massive loss, I don't know how we would get by, to be honest with you.
It would, it would really be a cut, our teachers, we wouldn't be able to pay for our teachers to attend workshops and these, these programs that really enhance their own understanding.
You have to pay, so we would end up paying and we'd have to come from somewhere else, I think that's the important, I mean, some of the, right?
Yeah.
Isn't that?
Some of it, yeah.
Some of it is required by contract.
Yeah, we have a few thousand in the budget, but that goes pretty quick.
Right.
So we tend to supplement through two way, and any like, you know, when we bring in a work, you know, like Chrissy mentioned, I think last month, it will be mentioned tonight, I've lost track of what meeting I'm at, the PD that we'll be offering in district, and all those graduate courses are paid for through the grant.
And that's also when we bring in speakers too, at the beginning of the year.
Yep, yes, exactly, just some, gone.
Yep.
Yeah, so it, it would be a massive loss, it's frightening.
I'm not sure we should let you talk anymore.
Yeah.
You always bring such wonderful legislative news.
As long as I'm not the one making it.
There you go.
Fair point, fair point, okay, thank you. Mr. Veneto?
Thank you very much. For my official report for April 2017, our total enrollment right now is 211 students and as you can see in Mr. Wilkens who pointed out, we have quite a bit of activity going on this month. April 25th, 26th, 27th, grade four is taking their English Language Arts components of MCAS. On May 1st, we have our Citizen of the Month Assembly, on May 2nd, we have our Dare graduation at 1:15 PM. Also on May 2nd, grade five, Mother Daughter Night Out at 6:30 here at Denne Library, I believe Mrs. Smith sent information out to the fifth grade parents, if she had not, she's going to be doing it shortly. On May 5th, we have a Citizen of the Month Pizza Luncheon, and also that night, the grade six basketball game, and that's gonna be at the middle school from 6:30 to 8:00. Coming right back on May 9th, grade three has their math MCAS, there's also a CASA meeting that night, 7 o'clock at the Denne Library. On May 10th, grade three will take part two of their math MCAS. May 11th and 12th, grade five is taking their MCAS math tests. May 16th, grade four will be testing math, and we also have our Father-Son Night Out in grade five, time is to be determined at this point in time. May 17th, we have grade four taking math, also that night is town meeting here at 7 o'clock. May 18th, grade six will be taking their math test, finishing that up on May 19th, and also on May 19th, grade two will be taking a field trip to the Heritage Museum. So yes, as the spring moves on, we become very, very busy.
Okay, Mr. Veneto, one question, I noticed that the Dare graduation has changed its time, any rationale for that?
Just the nature of the people who are being invited, wasn't going to work for.
Made it easier for people to come?
Correct.
Great, hopefully it'll be a little easier for some parents who couldn't take a full day to take a half day.
That's exactly it.
Fantastic, great to meet you, thank you.
Okay. All right, are you, you stay from the financial statement?
I think that would be me. So Christine was able to be here this evening, I just had reviewed the financials and I believe the warrants are going around and there's a summary sheet, I think Jason may have it. In terms of the, the monthly financial, there really haven't been much changes, we are in a deficit still in homeless transportation and that number is a number that we believe we'll be able to compensate through other areas, that number is budgeted through the end of the year unless something else changes, so hopefully that number will be where we end up. The other area that there's a deficit in is under special education and contracted services, but we have money in other areas under special education, so again, we believe that that will end up fine, so there have not been any changes that we're concerned about, looks like we will be ending the year in fine shape.
And where did we, did we end, is it, was it the beginning of April or was it the end of April for the vocational for next year?
April 1st.
April 1st.
And we are doing fine, we allocated enough, yep.
Okay.
Yep, that got through, okay, always an interesting.
I knew we were, we were close, but.
We were, yeah, we slid a couple in in some of the other towns, but I think we made it through in Plunkton.
Okay.
It's.
I'll take that.
Yep.
All right.
Oh yeah, that's.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, so just as we, as Mr. Frazier had mentioned before about professional development, you know, just, I just wanted to review some things that we've been doing this year, really to highlight how important our professional development is for our, our staff members, so as you know, our teachers have been participating in some great PD this year. Over this, over the past summer, our administrative team worked collaboratively through looking at data and our work through Planning for Success with Lori Lycus to decide on a theme of meeting diverse needs. We noticed that we wanted to focus on how to differentiate our instruction to meet the needs of all students, even if they're not on an IEP or a 504. In November, we focused on the theory of meeting diverse needs, and then in January, we focused on best practices of meeting diverse needs. There were breakout sessions that many of our teacher leaders and administrators led, and these topics range from mental health issues to how to accommodate when a student has a concussion, to using games in the classroom, both days were a huge success. Also, as you know, we've spent some time focusing on the Alice training this year, these are our procedures if there is an armed intruder in the building. During the half PD day, our teachers took part in school-based PD to review scenarios. Mr. Veneto, along with Officer Dana Smith from the Plunkton Police Department, led this training, we want to thank Chief Dillon and the Plunkton Police Department for collaborating with us on this effort. This summer, we'll be hosting two professional development opportunities for teachers, one is the Responsive Classroom introductory course for grade K through 5 teachers, I think actually our biggest enrollment is from the Denne, which we're really pleased about. Responsive Classroom is a way of teaching that emphasizes social, emotional, and academic growth in a strong and safe school community. And developed by classroom teachers, the approach consists of practical strategies for helping students build academic and social-emotional competencies day in and day out. And within 24 hours, the course was full, we had 30 slots available and most of them are, are Denne teachers, which is great. The other course that we will be offering this summer will be offered by Jessica Minahan. We are extremely excited to bring Ms. Minahan back to the region for a two-day workshop offering in August. Joy reached out to her and asked that she offer a workshop for our teachers after her huge keynote speech success. The workshop is entitled, "Reducing Anxiety in the Classroom," and she's even willing to take up to 100 participants, so it will be held at the Kingston Elementary School in their cafeteria to accommodate that. So we're thrilled with, with some of the things that we've accomplished this year, we will be starting up a professional development committee to really look forward as we move forward next year and the years after, so there are more stakeholders as far as teachers and parent professionals and administrators go, to really have more of a say of the professional development that is held in the district. So that's what I have, are you, any questions?
Mr. Frazier?
So, a lot of people think professional development is just to keep up licensure and it's more than that. It's often exactly what a teacher needs when they're feeling a little drained of energy, they've lost a little bit of that spark, and that's why all of these offerings and bringing those stakeholders to the table is so important, because it's gonna keep all of our teachers energized, which is gonna keep our children energized and wanting to come to school at the Denne. So that's great work, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing great.
Excellent. So in your packet, you have the voted FY '18 budget and the share cost budget, that's just for your records, it's, it's the information that we already voted and reviewed, but again, it's the final copy that says it was voted on, so just for your records. You have in your packet the summary sheet for the Masbo Transportation Review, I sent out, or, excuse me, Lisa sent out, the full PDF of the report, it looked a lot longer than it was, most of it was the actual contract, which wouldn't be anything that would necessarily impact the school committees as much, it was just some suggested language for it, but the actual report was probably between 15 and 20 pages, I think, something along those lines, did you wanna speak to it or?
I just, if anybody hasn't read it yet, I had to suggest that you read the full document, the summary, review, analysis conclusions, it's a nice starting off point, but the real need is in that full report and it's worth that time.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would, I would second that, I did find a few minutes, a little more than a few minutes, it's not that short.
No, no, but I'm just saying, it's not 50 pages like it looks.
It's not 50 pages, that's true, it's about less than half of that, but it is, it is important, I mean, I actually, I was one of the folks that attended and talked with these folks, and at first, I have to say, at first I'm like, "Oh, why are there only three options?" And then the fourth option shows up at the end, which is certainly the one that had some interest and curiosity with.
Absolutely, yep.
I think there's, I think we, just, just looking at, what is the factor that's in there, 18% increase in contracts that are going out to bid right now?
That's scary.
That's, that's not sustainable.
No.
You know, as it is, we're, we're what, 4% up per year?
And that was with bigging.
Through, through the contract, so that's a, so you're up 12% in your costs over three years, and if you're 18%, I mean, it's just, it's not sustainable, so, you know, to the folks out there watching, I think there's, there really are two pieces here that may actually work together as far as start times, but even just putting that aside and just looking at just the economics of the bus piece of it, we can't keep doing what we've been doing.
Absolutely.
And so we have to start those changes, if those changes facilitate also coming up with a reasonable solution for the start time issue.
I.
Considering we had a almost exactly 50/50 split in the survey that we did, which is kind of amazing.
Yeah.
You know, we have to look at the other piece of that.
Sure.
And that's going to mean some changes. But I think it, I think they could be very reasonable ones, which would also, also has benefits, not only, I mean, you could argue there's benefits from a socialization perspective, because you don't have, I mean, we can see it sitting on the green. I mean, you've got all these people scattered all the way along. You can see everybody, but we're all waiting for the bus to stop and for them to there. But also, it's going to have a benefit for the drivers trying to commute in the morning, because you're not making as many stops.
Right.
So, so what are the next steps with this? Are we supposed to, should we discuss it some here, or should we discuss it at our next meeting? I mean, just, just from a, from a bus piece of it? I mean, I know that.
So the, so the sleep needs committee will be reconvening?
Yeah.
To review this and come up with some suggestions for school committees, or some recommendations for school committees, to really see what, what we should do with, with the finding and the research. We're, we're going to be scheduling that meeting before the end of the school year. So it's a matter of making sure we can communicate and report out to the school committees as to what the, what the recommendations are. I'm not sure, some of the hybrid options that they're referring to also ask for more communal, where, where parents can drive their children to a bus stop, was in some of the reports.
Yeah.
And so, you know, one of the things too, that we, what we've discussed often is Plimpton, it's nice how many stops there are. And, you know, if we shorten that and quicken the time for Plimpton, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to affect because we have Kingston and Halifax still. And so, for the elementary.
But I, I almost think, I think for this committee, and we're not going to make any decisions tonight, but I think it's something to think about and reach out to folks in the community and get input, is that we have our own issues. And we have issues with 50-minute bus rides.
Yes.
In, you know, where you can see the house from here, you know? I mean, not, I'm being a little bit silly, but there are long bus rides for such a small town.
And John, I know, I know you're being a little silly about the fact, but we've both been on this committee for three years now. And that is the number one issue. And thank God, this is the number one issue. But this is the number one issue people bend my ear about, is how long their kids are on the school buses.
Right.
And how it extends their day. Some of these kids are on the bus if you put the day and the afternoon, the morning and the afternoon together, for an hour and 30 to an hour and 40 minutes a day on a bus.
So I, I think it's worth reading the report. I, I think, I think that, I honestly think, and if you don't like it, you can call me and find me and yell at me about it. But I really don't think we can have bus stops at every house in the future. I mean, there may be needing to stage that, like, because we require, what, for kindergarten and first grade, that someone be there to meet, is it, something like that? That, you know, maybe there's, you, you, you know, you have that from a safety perspective. But then you move to the bus? I mean, I, I'll be quite honest, when, I, I couldn't believe it when I was realizing that every kid was picked up at their house. I mean, that never was anything that ever, and I lived in a rural community like Plimpton.
Well, I don't think it's quite that extreme.
It's close.
Close.
Yeah, I mean, I have, you know, my next-door neighbor has kids in the Dennehy, and we have never been asked to, and we're on, we're on the green. I mean, there's, there's nowhere to.
We're on a dead end, and they stop at every house.
So, I mean, there's, you know, there, I think there's, we have a lot of cul-de-sac developments that you could, you could, doesn't mean necessarily put it at the end, but you could at least have a stop, so everybody gets on it one stop and it quickens that. I mean, I think you could save 10, 15 minutes of route with some of this, as long as it's thoughtfully done.
Right.
And I think that in and of itself could be beneficial for Plimpton.
Sure.
It would then feed into whatever else might be able to be done on the bigger picture. But I think if, you know, I think we need to be thinking about.
Yeah, I hate to say it, but what it does for the other schools and the other districts isn't our concern on this committee.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think, you know, and again, I, I may be misspeaking, but I think some of the issues, at least from what I understand historically, is there aren't sidewalks in, in all areas.
You're, you're going to have places where you're going to be stopping more frequently, but we also have a decent number of our student population live in the developments with, that are dead ends.
Yeah.
I mean, we have the roads that existed, and we have dead ends.
Right.
I mean, we don't, or, or a neighborhood that's, that goes in a loop. I mean, we don't have anything else.
Right.
I mean, the map of the town in 1900 and today looks pretty much the same unless it's a road that goes in and out.
Sure.
So, you know, and, and even, I mean, you know, on busy roads, you can't, you don't want a second grader, you know, trundling along with the commuters who are on their phone drinking their coffee and not watching the road. So, I get that. But I think there's definite places where we can, where we could make some reasonable changes that would, in some ways, might actually help some parents where, you know, they can even a neighborhood say, well, you know, you have Monday, you have Tuesday, you have Wednesday, and they can, the kids can all come down to the one spot, and so on.
No, I think it'd be great.
I think we, it does.
How would you like to do it? You want me to just leave it on the agenda for next month?
Yeah, let's leave it on the agenda. Let's just poke out to some folks and, I mean, I'd like to hear what people have to sort of say about that.
One other thing that they did mention in the report is we have the right technically to, to make a vote as a school committee, as a policy, which I, Jason's shaking his head, I would not recommend either, but that we could make a motion that everybody who lives within two miles has to transport their own child there. I don't agree with that. We don't have that in any of our districts, but that was, I'm just mentioning what was in the report. That was an option. I mean, there's some ways of making some policy changes. Some of them, to me, are extreme, but I think reviewing some of the bus stops and, and, you know, we could work with the bus company to talk about that. I think that is very doable, next step.
Yeah, I think so. And maybe, maybe there's even, you know, I don't know, for, for some, I don't, I think there's a number of creative options. You could even do some hybrid approach where you have a, you know, have a pickup, you know, at the townhouse or whatever, you know, that, that you could do for kids who are at a certain point further out or whatever on the, I don't know. There's, I think we could be creative, make it easier for, particularly for the kids in some extent, for the parents too. I think it's time.
Okay. Great. Mr. Chair.
Chair, I was just mentioning that when I was saying that there wouldn't be much of a change in time, I was really referencing the Silver Lake Middle School and High Schools.
Yeah.
So I apologize for that, that I do think that having that, that look at the elementary level would definitely be able to save some time. So I just want to mention that.
Yeah, and it, and hopefully, it opens up the opportunity to make, you know, at least some tweaks, because, you know, the, the flip-flopping seems to be pretty extreme as to, you know, as to, in, in consequences. And just being able to tighten everything up and squeezing a few minutes here and there. I know I'm a lot less cranky if I get up 15 minutes later in the morning. So 15 minutes can make a big difference.
Absolutely.
Good. Thank you.
Excellent. We already voted last month, the school calendar vote. I apologize, we were actually a little bit ahead. I guess it was sort of at the end of the, the month, so my schedule got off on that. Everybody else just voted it. So that's all set. And then the last thing is the school choice discussion and vote. So we obviously did not have any turnout in terms of the public hearing, although it was properly posted. You will remember, I'm sure, that every year, all school committees have to make a vote on whether or not they will accept school choice students. Plimpton currently has seven students. Five of them are in grade two. Two of them are in kindergarten.
I believe that's right.
I knew that until I started saying that. Does that sound right? I think that's right. I believe that's right.
Two of kids are in grade one?
Five are in second grade.
Okay.
So.
Are you sure? I thought it was.
Kindergarten, kindergarten one.
Kindergarten one and first grade one?
Yes.
And then the rest are in second.
Five are in second. I know there are five in second. Okay, sorry about that. I had one in first grade. So we need to make a disca, decision about what Plimpton would like to do for next year. We currently have 24 student packets enrolled for kindergarten for FY '18, for next September. We have a few more packets out that have not been completed and returned, but we anticipate them. I know one of the school choice current students has a younger sibling that is very interested in trying to attend here in Plimpton for FY '18. A current school choice sibling would be interested in joining. And again, we still have a pretty small second grade class that if we chose to, we could offer it as openings, and that would be next year's third grade class, if we wish to do that, just to have it as an option. I can let you know that we may or may not get any interest in it, but I'm not sure it would be a bad idea to do it. So my personal suggestion would be to consider kindergarten, if we were to consider it, and to consider third grade.
So we have 24 packets. We have a few more out.
Yeah.
If we sit, what does that range typically bring us? Because I know there's also, there ends up being a certain amount of movement. So we're looking at a class 30 or under.
Correct.
But not a class of 20.
Correct.
So we're looking at 25, 26, 27, something like that. Maybe as many as 30, depending on which houses get built and how old the kids are when they're moving in.
Exactly.
So we have 24 packets that are out and back.
That's correct.
And there's a few more that are out. But then you could always have a few that, oh, I needed to do a packet, or.
Right.
But we have a number of, I mean, we have quite a bit of building going on in town, and they are not retirement houses.
Okay. Yep.
I have two, I have two on my street. They pulled the foundation on one last week, and they're doing, they're digging for the next one this week, so.
Yeah, and they all look, to me, like, three to, or more likely, four-bedroom houses that they're building now. I mean, everything that's been built on Ring Road here is clearly full-size colonials and targeted. Okay. Okay, so, but we have, we have five children in second grade out of 21, so it's almost a quarter of the class.
I'm not in favor of opening spots for the incoming third grade for a variety of reasons that I can get into if anybody wants to have that discussion. However, we have discussed in previous meetings where we would definitely open up a slot for families who came to us in our time of need. So I am definitely in favor of opening one slot with preference to the sibling of a school choice child for kindergarten.
And how is the current second grade class for the other district schools? I mean, is it small?
Yeah.
Okay. So we, so we're, we're trying to, we're trying, we're trying to.
That would be small if it were one class.
But, I mean, but it, forget about the class sizes. The number of students per grade, it is a low grade.
Yes.
So we're fighting a demographic issue. I mean, is, there's.
No, the other second grades are not small.
They're not?
No.
So just nobody in Plimpton had babies for that year?
Apparently, yeah.
Okay. Because I was under the impression that there's, that there's, that maybe not in, but around, generally, that is, there's been a dip in, because of the recession.
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to look, but I, I don't have a memory that that's true.
I don't think it's true.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
Not for, not for Kingston or Halifax.
No. I do so. We do have a large first grade class in Kingston currently. You know, that was an anomaly. They're very large.
Why is this too?
But that's, you know, I don't know what happened that year, but.
Well, I mean, what I had heard, because, because, John, John Tuffy had said this too, that there's, maybe it's not showing up in each of our district schools, but that on average, it is a very low year, because you trace it back, and this is 2008, 2009.
Oh, we said.
And you have, was a pretty big shock to things. And of course, it ended up, not that it wasn't bad, but not as bad as people thought it could have been. And therefore, the next year, it was like, okay, while that was done, we'll go back with our family planning, which is why you have a jump up in that next class.
Sure.
So, so apparently not proven out in the, in the microcosm of Silver Lake.
Yeah.
But shown certainly here. Do you guys have other thoughts?
My, my only other thought, and I know Jason disagrees, and I understand why Jason will disagree, and I respect that, is I'm, I just get concerned every time we go through this with that grade, that there's so few kids.
Mm-hmm.
You only need one or two move out, and we're going to have a problem. And I, I understand we have a large percentage of school choice kids in that class. And without those five kids, we would have a problem on our hands. But I just get nervous, because kids move in, but they also move out.
Absolutely.
You, you only need one, one kid to move out of that class, and we're going to have issues. You know, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to open it up to 12 kids, but I would be in favor of opening it up to even just like two slots, just something to give us a little bit of a cushion, because that class is just so small. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
But I'm not going to brawl it out in Park Lot.
I mean, I'd win.
I'm smart enough to know when to listen, so. And that you've been on this committee, and I have, and if that is how you feel, I will vote with you.
You don't have to.
Open those slots. I need you to understand where my concern lies. This is the beginning of the years where the testing begins and where our schools get report cards. I just don't know what implications that has for the type of families that might be farming us out this time versus when they came to us before because we had full vacay. I don't know if it's pro or con. It's just a concern that I'm thinking about. We're good part testing, and cast 2.0, whatever they're going to call it next year.
And, and again, even if we did open it up, just to clarify that, we opened it up, I should have bought.
Two years.
Two years ago, and we didn't get anyone after kindergarten. Kindergarten is when they mostly.
Because we did, we did, we opened both first and kindergarten.
Kindergarten, right? And that we didn't get anybody to apply for it. So even if the committee voted to, we would list it, but it doesn't mean anybody would apply. But again, it would sort of be a due diligence on the school committee's part that they made the attempt, would be how it could be viewed. But again, I, I'm not sure that we would get people necessarily, but just another way to look at it, because we have opened it before, and we did not get any applicants.
When we first opened it, we had five slots. We didn't even get five seats.
That's correct. That's, yep, that's correct. You know, we don't, some people advertise, and they, some school systems, and I don't want to go down this road, but just an FYI, some school systems really use this as a form of income, and they advertise, and they take out ads in the paper, and they basically do a sales pitch of their school. I do not want to go down that road. I mean, I think Plimpton is a quiet little slice of heaven that I'm not necessarily going out of my way to advertise. But I do think in some areas, the population is small in some grades. And I think for Plimpton to keep its magic, there's small, intimate, wonderful, and then there's a little bit too small. You have a couple of kids out sick, and it's a really small class. So, you know, it's that balance, and I don't know exactly what that point is, but I do think, you know, the areas that personally, I would think would be the incoming grade three in kindergarten, would be the areas to me that I would, I would look at and consider.
Your thoughts, sir?
I definitely agree with what Mrs. Blackwood just said. On a day that you have two kids out, that's 20% of your class that's gone, that's, you're doing an awful lot of reteaching at that point the next day. And I think, again, to echo Joy's point, there is, there is a dangerously small number, and I think we're kind of flirting with it right now. That being said, whoever is in this building, we're going to take care of them, so. But again, I understand what Jason's concerns are as well, and it's a lot to think about. I don't think that school choice has been a bad thing by any stretch. Those kids that come in and they become part of the community very quickly. But again, at the same time, you never know what you're going to get when you open that up. So I see every point that's being made here. All I can say is, the kids that have been here, it has been working.
Yeah.
How many slots for the incoming third grade stuff?
I would say two, three tops.
Mike, what's your thoughts?
I only think that, it just seems like we're just using this as a Band-Aid. That's just my opinion. I mean, I do agree, it's definitely a problem. But because of the small class size that has, are the teachers being a little more creative in the classroom as far as when they get the sick kids in? Do they combine the lesson plans as a total group and kind of split the day, or has there been any kind of, I don't know, a little bit of picking outside the box on, because it is small?
I think they've had to just, I think as far as planning for the year, I mean, you have to take a very different, a different route than your traditional, well, for us, traditional 16, 17 kids. Yes, the kids are getting a lot more one-to-one direct service with the teacher, which is wonderful, but at the same time, when you go to do anything where you require groups of three or groups of four for an activity, that's where the challenge comes in, because we just don't have those numbers.
But if you combined them as a total, then you would, you would, you would be able to do more of those.
If they were on the exact same page on the exact same day, in theory, I agree with you, but that, that's very rare to have happen, where they would be doing the exact same lesson in math or the exact same lesson in ELA on the same day. In theory, yeah, it would be great, but that isn't quite the reality of it right now.
I mean, we have, we have had a class this small, although this is with school choice, so it's not quite this small start. It is the current sixth grade class. There were 21 kids in that class when they started. I think there were 20, and then they got a first, another kid within the first week or two of school. They have climbed up. That said, if you look at this class, you haven't seen that. You haven't seen them really adding much. I really do think it's a demographic issue, that we may see a few kids roll in over the next couple of years with all of the houses being built, but then again, you never know whether it will be a fourth grader or a fifth grader at that time that comes in, you never know, you know? Usually, it's the one that go into the class with the larger number of kids, just because, why not? Just make it more difficult. And I do agree, Mike, to some extent, it's a Band-Aid. I think, I think discussions that I have had with Selectman and Finance Committee is I have made very much the point that there's even more disruption to the school to, to, you know, combine a class like this, because you're then pushing one class through, and it creates enormous disruption throughout. And that is just something we're trying to deal with. I think there is a reasonable argument to have a limited number of slots open. If we get someone, we get someone. If we don't, which we may not, especially as the later the class goes on, it's probably less likely. But I also think it's a fair argument to say, we've done our part in providing the additional five students as it is, and, you know, we're very thoughtful as to how we're dealing with this. You know, overall, our class sizes are down a little bit
Mm-hmm.
From where they were. And that may change, because we really, we didn't build any new houses in town in any, any number for the last, since 2007. I mean, so it's what, eight years? Which is why you see this sort of a drop. You know, it just, there just hasn't been much building, and now we don't seem to know how to not build. So we're definitely, the pendulum is going the other way. I think for grade three, if folks are interested in making a motion on that, I wouldn't go above two. I think that, that could be reasonable. I agree, I do not think we need to advertise this. I think it's out there, it's available. We're not, we're not looking at this as a moneymaker.
No.
And, you know, if we have capacity, and so putting that, as we do, we put that money aside for use for the, for the students, it's not a revenue source.
Exactly.
So...
I make a motion that the Plimpton School Department participate in school choice with one slot for a kindergarten with preference for the sibling of a current school choice student, and two slots for the third grade for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Do you have a second? Are those in favor? Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we already voted and discussed school lunch. So thank you.
Yep. I would entertain a motion for executive session and adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we adjourn to executive session for the purposes of contract negotiations. Form me to return to regular session for adjournment.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and have a good evening.